Okay. Uh, so right here. Right here, uh, food program. Let me know when we're green. Okay, um, I'm calling the meeting in order. Subcommittee on Congress will be held to discuss upcoming changes in the operation of the City of Chelsea pop-up food pantry. This is a result of a communications or request by Council of Damali to take the role call. Council of Niamh.
Present.
Council of Judith Garcia. Council of Todd Taylor.
Here.
Council of Leon Robinson.
Here.
Council of Damali Vido. Council of Melinda Maldonado Vega.
Here.
Council of Yuman Baritas.
Here.
Council of Roya Vision, present. Council of Enyon Lopez.
Here.
Okay, we have 11 presidents and 1 absence. At this time, I'm going to allow the maker of the motion to address Counselor Vido.
Yep, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everybody, for being here today initially. I called this meeting because I started to see some messaging coming out from the city that we were going to be dwindling down some of the food distribution and that we were moving it to three days a week over at Port Park. I didn't think that was geographically equitable and that if there was still a need in the community that we needed to do a little better than that and maybe continue the five-day operation that we had going. Since in the time that has transpired.
Has joined the meeting.
Decided to schedule this meeting. I know the city has gone back to doing the five-day-a-week, but there's still some question as to what this food distribution program is going to look like moving forward. So I wanted to make sure that we just brought everybody to the table so we can have a conversation and figure out how we move forward going from here. So I appreciate you responding, putting the communication on the agenda, making this happen, and I hope that we can figure out what we need to do here to address the needs of the community.
Okay, just to let everyone know, I see that we have city manager here with me in the conference room. I think I saw Ron Fishman. I see he's there also available, who is runs the Chelsea.
Has joined the meeting.
Food program with the nonprofits. And I see Ben Kears is here from the city and Alex Train is also on the call. With that, I'll have the city manager just to give us some, give us an update on where we are and what he expects to, what direction the city is going regards to the food program.
So I just want people to understand, the original decision to relocate and consolidate operations at Port Park wasn't motivated by reducing services to people. It was actually motivated by a recognition on our part that the program that the council had funded, which we had originally intended to fund through May 29th, was going to have to sustain itself probably at least through the summer. And so we were trying to figure out, with the resources that we had available, how could we make this program sustainable for a longer period beyond May 29th? Because we knew that the need would exist. And so relocating to Port Park made sense to us because it enabled us to extend those existing resources for the summer. And so pricing it out, we could determine that we could get through at least August 31st, still have some money left over in case we had to extend it to September. But we will, we recognize that this wasn't, this was different and would be inconvenient to many residents. When the council raised these concerns, we pivoted and said, well, let's keep it going to these five locations in the city. We want to meet until we can together figure out a different way to transition and figure out how to keep this sustainable. So you should have gotten three financial proposed options that we worked on. The first one was what would happen had we done what we had originally intended to do? We could operate at Port Park through the summer. We'd still have a couple hundred thousand dollars left over. We could continue to do something in food distribution. The second option is doing what we're doing now, continuing the five-day-a-week pantries through June and then pivoting to Port Park. And we probably have enough resources. This shows a $50,000 deficit on August 29th, but I imagine we could probably make it to August 29th with the money that we have. But again, that does require pivoting to Port Park at the end of June into Joao. The third option is we continue to maintain these five-day-a-week food pop-up pantries. The cost to the city is $125,000 a week. And if we do this through August 29th, we'll need another $600,000 from the council before we'll have a $600,000 deficit by August 29th. And as long as you want to keep this running, we can do it. It's just the cost is $125,000. And so I don't know that that's sustainable for a city of our size. We have to figure out a way to transition somehow. My preference would be to transition to some sort of EBT card-type program, but that has a lot of challenges, logistic challenges, administrative challenges in terms of figuring out who should qualify, and then it has a cost to it as well. But it, it does, the reason I like that approach, and I'm not certain that we can pull it off, I'm not certain it's doable, but there's two things that I like about that approach. One, it ensures that we are only taking care of Chelsea residents. Now, there's not an overwhelming number of non-Chelsea residents in these lines, but there are some, you know, where, you know, on a day like today at Washington Square Park, I didn't see the numbers from today, but typically that's the place where we get the most non-Chelsea residents because it is right on the Everett line. You know, there might be 15% of those residents that haven't seen the light. That, that's the one that has the most. And I'm not saying this is a big, big deal, I'm just saying one benefit of transitioning is we ensure we're spending our money on Chelsea residents. And the second is.
I'm sorry, Esai Gonzalez, can you please mute yourself? Can we have Mr. Gonzalez mute himself, please?
I'm sorry, can folk, folks hear me?
No, um, oh, we can now, yep.
So that was one, that's one benefit of transitioning in the way I suggested. Another one is that we will spend all of our money or more of our money on food as opposed to incidentals. So a lot of this cost we're incurring are costs that are non-food related to their costs of transportation companies, temporary workers, forklifts, loaders, things that aren't food-related but unnecessary pieces of doing the kind of food distribution program that we're doing right now. So, you know, to get into a business where we're spending our money only on Chelsea resident and only on food or almost exclusively on food has a lot of benefit to me. I just don't know if we can figure out a way to transition. I don't, but I'm exploring this option. I don't know what it looks like, but I think it's worth exploring. Other than that, the only solution is to continue what we're doing or to transition down in Port Park and go from a cost of $125,000 a week to a cost of about $58,000 a week because we can eliminate, but that would also mean reducing it to three distributions a day. We would reduce the cost from $125,000 to $58,000. Most of the cost is in the transportation company. We're paying roughly $75,000 a month to Tufts to basically do what the National Guard was doing. So those are just my overall comments. This isn't easy stuff, is not easy to figure out. I'm really struggling. We're trying to figure out how we make this sustainable and how we transition out of this food distribution business we're in because we just can't do this forever.
Counselor Vido? Any follow-up questions?
I do, I have a couple of questions. I'm just curious as, I know that the amount of people that have been waiting in the lines that the numbers are going down. I know that at one point it was up to 5,000 and it's my understanding that as of last week, it was significantly lower than that. And so I guess, I guess I'm trying to figure out what this money situation looks like. When you say $600,000, are you talking at capacity, the 5,000 folks? And then the other question I have is with respect to this EBT card program, is it specific to just, are there any restrictions like that they can only use it on food or is it a cash thing? And I just want to know more, yeah, that, that's it for now.
Okay, so with respect to your first question, obviously if the amount of food we're producing starts to drop, the cost drops. Some of our, some of our money is in purchasing food. So if we're purchasing less food because the number of boxes we have to produce is less, then yes, we'll save money. And so conceivably, we could keep up this current pace at something less than $125,000 a week. But some of those costs stay the same regardless of how many boxes we're doing. So the Tufts contract, it doesn't matter if we're producing 300 boxes or 500 boxes a day, I'm paying Tufts the same amount of money because I got the same truck, the same employees, they're just giving out less boxes. So yes, some money reduces, but not all. In terms of your second question, so a local EBT-type program, if we could ever figure out how to set it up, could be crafted in any way we want. We wouldn't necessarily be limited the way a federally run SNAP program is limited. Those decisions by the government about things you can buy and things you can't buy are policy decisions that someone makes. So when they do get a SNAP card, it's not the program, it's not the technology that prohibits you from buying a prepared meal versus a dry goods. It's some bureaucrat said, we're not going to allow people to use the card for that. So if we had some local, we could set up the parameters any way we want. If it were more like a gift card program, there'd be really no limitation. People could really use it for anything, even for things we might not want them to use it for. But, you know, we could have no limits on a card and simply give a gift card to people and say, is a gift card worth $250? This is your monthly allotment for food. If you decide to use it on something other than food, that's your choice.
Okay, the other thing I had is, is there any type of coordination that's happening with some of the other programs in the city? Because I know the Chelsea Collaborative is running a food program. I know Salvation Army is, I know Father Edgar is doing the, the food pantry. And so it just seems that a lot of folks are, are really doing, at some point, we all really had to have our hands on deck. I'm curious if there's a coordinated response or gauge of what the need is so we can all work together in addressing the issue so that the sole responsibility of this doesn't fall on any one entity.
So I guess I have to let those, those entities speak for themselves. I would say this, we have sort of operated as the more, the better. So we're doing our thing, they're doing their thing. We're all providing food, it's helping people. We haven't tried to coordinate in any sense. One thought the city did have at one point was, could we just transition what we're doing to these other entities? So, you know, St. Luke's, instead of them doing one food pantry, they're doing two and the city's supporting them in some fashion. And we're out of the business just providing financial support for an existing entity. Or we did that with the Collaborative, or we did that with Salvation Army. But my sense from talking to these groups is none of them really has any more capacity to add capacity, that they're pretty much operating at max capacity. And it's not as if the city could say, we'll give you some money, do what you're doing three days a week instead of one. That hasn't been something that any of them felt comfortable they were capable of doing. And so it sounds, it's a good theory, it was an idea that we thought about, but in practice, it doesn't seem feasible. But I will let some of these other folks, I see both Ron is on and Captain Gonzalez is on from Salvation Army, maybe someone from the Collaborative's on, but my sense is they're operating at their peak capacity as is.
One, one final thing, and it's just that I do like the idea of the EBT program. I think it's a little bit more dignified for folks to be able to buy their own food. But I worry that they won't be able to stretch the dollar as much as we've been able to because we're buying a lot of this food wholesale and obviously the prices would be cheaper. I just wanted to throw that out there and I don't have any other questions, thank you.
And so I'm just going to add the one, you know, one, one problem hard for us to get our grip on is what's the magnitude of this need? If there's 1,500 people and that may be a low bar and we need to give them $400 a month, that's $600,000 a month. That's a lot of money, you know? At some point, we don't have unlimited resources, so, you know, I'm, you know, the thought was, could we transition to something that, as you said, is a little more dignified, gives a little more control to the people that we want to help? But it might be that it's, it is just a transition and it slowly ends at some point with the hope of all of us that by the end of September, maybe people will be back on their feet enough to make ends meet the way they were able to make end means before. Not that everyone was able to because our food insecurity issues were there.
That's right.
But, you know, at some point, we just, we're not capable of doing this indefinitely.
Thank you, Ms. Ambrosino, thank you, Mr. President, that's it for now.
I'm going to recognize one of our invited guests just to give us a state of the pop-up food pantries, and that would be, if I, hopefully I'm not putting you on the spot, and that's Ron Fishman. Ron is in regular contract, contact rather, with most of the entities running these outfits. I know that myself and the Collaborative have been difficult to try to participate in the meetings just because of the conflict in scheduling, but overall, we've been keeping, reading the notes. So I'll let Ron provide an idea, and I have an email from him that gives us, and he can maybe read it off, just to give us a status of what the St. Luke's and the Salvation Army is doing right now or what our volume is and what possible, what their plans are and, you know, how they stand. So Ron, can you join us?
Sure, yep, thank you. I'm going to let Captain Gonzalez talk about the Salvation Army. In general, there is a collaboration. We have, as part of the city's pandemic response, we have a food assessment team that Roy just spoke about, and we have, we come together and we help each other, the collaborative, the Salvation Army with helps and vice versa. The St. Luke's, when there's a need that comes up. Also, there's a pantry at Luce Cristo Church, Resella Resource Center. They've been helped by the Salvation Army and by others. So there is a network of those that we get together, we weren't getting together three times a week, now we get together two times a week. Over 20 people show up and we, we go around the table, what's experiences and what's needed, transportation, boxes, et cetera, et cetera. And so that is going on. I know that saying, one of the things that Damali said that, that may not be the numbers that were brought up, about 5,000 now being much less, just to get the point that at one time, St. Luke's came up with a number of 3,500 at one time. The following week, with more food and, and that they gave out, the number was 800. And so it didn't make sense that there were 3,500 that week. So I think that the numbers, as phone thousand definitely was inflated and I don't know how much the inflation is. What I do know, and Captain Gonzalez can confirm this, the need has been rising every week. It hasn't been decreased. And that just continues to get worse, that's, that situation. And so those are like two points, but there is, I was on the phone just a short while ago with, with Pastor Ricardo from Resella, from Luce Cristo, who has a small operation now, but mostly he feeds people. He was telling me that he could, he could change to serving 600 at a time with telephone appointments so that they don't have long lines and that he feels confident that they'd be able to expand with the right support. So he needs refrigeration, he needs shelving, he needs free cruisers. But if he was able to equip himself in a way that he could be one place, he could expand the network. And if the network, and there are others that are doing small, there's on the corner of Broadway and Third, Revival Church, they have a small Monday morning one with more support, they could expand. So I think that a combination of the two, at least for a while, of strengthening what's on the ground as well as what the city can do and then see how it goes. I don't know if, if there's a question for me or Captain Gonzalez can give an idea from his point of view.
Captain Gonzalez, thank you for joining us. Can you give us an update of what your operation is doing right now? How many people it handles, families, et cetera, and days of when it operates?
Well, thank you for inviting me to this, to this meeting. I know it is important for, for us to be, to communicate the impact that is happening on the demands of food. And as I shared with Ron on the call on Tuesday, last week, we, we saw 200 families increase from the prior week. So we serve an over, over 2,600 boxes weekly of food. So in this week, it hasn't been any, any shorter lines. Today, we, we did over, over 800 boxes of food. So, so it is, the need is there and now as, as the National Guard is facing now, you know, we sense that their, their alliance will become longer. So I know that, that Tom mentioned something about how we can come on board to, to maybe alleviate some of these increases of needs. We've been discussing with, with my wife regarding how we can expand our services. And, and Wednesday, we only do produce. So another way, I guess, we can, we can expand it is to also add on Wednesdays also dry goods for different families. And we have started also signing people in into our system so, so, so that family can come not as often as, as they like, at least a system in place so it's not, so, so we can stretch the goods to more families throughout the week. And, and also another thing, on the three days that we have, we could extend the hours of service. But as I mentioned to Ron before in a, in a private call with him is that resources are, are very limited. We, as you, many of you know, probably Food Bank has been, has been bombarded with so many, with so many appointments and so many food, food orders and agencies asking for the same stuff. So we haven't been able to, to get what we normally will get on a, on a non-COVID situation. So we've been, we can have food for, for families.
Okay. If I, I'd like to ask, I see Ben is on the line, Ben Kears, who's been operating the Port Park. Ben, can you give us a sense, if I'm not mistaken, you're, what's your number of boxes that you're doing now every day, Monday through Friday?
So right now, we are doing about, I think we're still maintaining 1,000 boxes a day down at Port Park, and we need roughly between 250 and 300 for the actual deliveries. And then the others go to the points of distribution. So the 1,000 that we create every day, that we also receive, you know, other Salvation Army boxes and whatnot.
So I'm sorry, so what do you mean by that? So in addition to, I'm trying to get a real grasp, like when you say you make 1,000, in addition to that, you get more boxes?
So Monday through Friday, we make 1,000 boxes a day. Recently, we've been receiving Salvation Army boxes, 500 on Thursday, 500 on Friday. So we make enough boxes to basically satisfy the points of distribution every day and our deliveries, which is roughly 1,000 boxes a day.
Okay. The numbers, I'll speak from the Collaborative side. We're probably making easily about 1,500 distributing about 2,000 boxes every Tuesday and every Thursday by far easily. We, they usually operate two and a half hours. Melinda's saying higher. I know within the first hour, we distribute easily about 1,000 boxes. So we're doing about 1,000 boxes an hour as far as distribution goes. So, you know, again, if I'm looking at all these numbers between the city, Salvation Army, the St. Luke's, Luce, you're talking about 10,000 boxes, close to 10,000 boxes of food being distributed outside, in, in our community, which is an unbelievable amount. So first and foremost, you know, everyone should be patting themselves on the, on the back for at least being able to get this many boxes of food out to our community. And hopefully we're not, you know, it's, they, obviously you're going to get some people who may come from outside. You know what? If you're standing. If you're standing, coming from Lynn to drive down here and wait four hours for a box of food, God bless you. Maybe you probably need it. So, but it's going to be something. Now that we got an idea of numbers, I want to go back to the reason why this was originally called. And, you know, I think a few councilors were concerned when the move by the administration was to curtail, in our eyes, the operation, and not only that, but tried to designate a single point in the community as the distribution, which is Port Park. Something, obviously, probably reaction, but from the council, from the public, caused that to change. And I'd like to focus first on that and understand, what was the decision behind going to just Port Park? And what made the decision to come back and say, well, we'll reflect and just do, you know, one spot a day, five days a week?
So as I said at the beginning, the original idea was, we have a certain amount of money that the council appropriated. We knew this need was going to last through the summer. We were trying to figure out a way to sustain it through the summer. Relocating to Port Park made it possible to do that. We could make it through the end of the summer and still have a little bit of money left over. When the council raised concerns, I mean, there were concerns that we recognized were going to occur, but we said, all right, we'll pivot, we'll do this until we can get to meet with the council and figure out a different approach. And if the council wants to continue to fund the five days a week, we'll continue to do it until the money runs out. And what I'm showing you here, you know, options for the council are really, at this point, two. Continue to do five days a week for as long as the council wants to fund it. And it's $125,000 a week. And we will basically, if we, we'll basically be out of money at the end of July, and we'll need additional money to get through August. Because if we carry this through to the end of August, that last Friday of August, we will be, we'll have a deficit of about $600,000. So we can continue to do five days a week, five locations around the city. The cost is $125,000 a week. If we pivot to Port Park at the end of June and do Port Park for the summer at three distributions a week at that one location, we can pretty much get through the end of August without any need for further council appropriation. Those are the two options that you have before, scenario two and scenario three.
There's always a consistent theme here about Port Park. My question is, besides Port Park, were there any other locations that was considered as a central base to operate that would provide either a better point for distribution or just a better site overall? It just seems that the city zeroed in on Port Park at the very beginning, and that was it. So I'm curious about what other options were available, if they were discussed, and, you know, on sites, on sites.
Yeah, we never, we ended up at Port Park just out of serendipity. That was land that was given to us by Eastern Minerals. They secured all of the containers, the refrigeration, and put them there. And so that's where we ended up doing our distribution from because it was the point where all of the distribution equipment was provided by Eastern Minerals for no cost. You know, relocating that operation to somewhere more central, like a school parking lot, I guess is possible. But then come sometime in August, we'll have to be out of there and potentially sometime sooner than that as the school department tries to start thinking of where, what a, you know, late summer school is going to look like. We can't operate out of school parking lots indefinitely. So, and that's logistically hard, moving all the equipment. It's just that there's a cost to doing all of that. So we ended up at Port Park because that's where we started this initial, the food distribution support for the National Guard was always at Port Park because that's where Eastern Minerals originally gave us the room and the containers.
When we discuss, when the decision is made about, you know, need and such, what are, what's the data looking like and is used to decide what, you know, what the city of Chelsea is going through? Is it, are we collecting unemployment data? Or are we just looking at data that is, you know, how many people are standing in line? Are we asking, you know, Market Basket and Compare Market to give us sales data to get an idea if their sales have gone up or down because people may or may not have money? I mean, what is the data that drives the decision of the level of how our food pantry may or may not last?
Yeah, we don't have, the data that we have are who's in our lines. That's what the data that we have. And we have very limited information because we don't ask people much. We're trying to not create barriers to people. We don't ask about income. We ask them, where do they live, what street, how many people in their families? But we ask that same question, and so we have a fair amount of data. And when we looked last week, we had about 1,800 separate identifiable, for the, for last week, from last week, from Monday through Friday, we had about 1,850 separate addresses of people from Chelsea who were in our lines that whole week. So we had about 2,500 total people in our lines. But they were either some repeat people who gave us the same address a few different times, the same apartment number, or they were non-Chelsea residents. So we culled the non-Chelsea and the duplicate addresses. For one week alone, we had about 1,800 separate addresses from the city of Chelsea of people that were in our lines in that one week.
When you say that there are challenges to creating an EBT card program, which, by the way, I wanted to state that I think is the best way to go. You and I had a conversation weeks ago about, you know, creating a food pantry with the manpower that is needed, the refrigeration and all of that. You're recreating the wheel versus whatever supermarket and maybe giving. You stated that it was, there may be some laws that prohibit us from doing that, or the city from doing that. Are you saying that there are now ways to maybe circumvent any potential laws of funding that can come up with an EBT card system? And would that be available to all of the stores in Chelsea? Not just say Compare Market, Stop &amp; Shop and Market Basket, but also convenience stores?
So I think the challenges are, there's a couple of different challenges. I'm not going to be able to identify them all. But challenge, a challenge is just the tech, like, there's a cost to, there's an administrative cost. I don't know what that is. There's a, we have to have some entity that creates the cards and is able to take a list from the city and say, here's the people that we want, create a card for them, and every month, make sure there's X amount of money on this card, and it will be drawn from an account that we'll put money into. So some administrator, it's a bank or it's some company, has to administer that system. Create the actual plastic card, have the set of addresses, make sure there's the right money in the bank account, and make sure every month, a certain amount of money gets charred, gets, you know, charged to the card. So there's that administrative piece that we haven't quite figured out yet. But I think that's figuring, that's something that could be done. It's a question of how much does that administrative piece cost? The tougher challenge, from my perspective, is who is going to qualify? And how do we qualify people? That is really challenging because, you know, for a lot of, a lot of what we've done so far is people have self-certified. So when the one Chelsea fund, you show up to this nonprofit and say, I just have to prove to you I live in Chelsea. You get a $250 check. You don't have to prove you need it, you don't have to prove anything. You just prove you live in Chelsea. The rental assistance program we've done operates kind of the same way. People are self-certifying how much money they make. We're not checking their bank accounts. We're not doing any, you know, investigation of them. They are self-certifying that they meet these minimum requirements that we have, and we're going to throw them in a lottery. Trying to figure out how to qualify people is kind of hard. If we really want to only help the neediest, we need some way to verify income. And that's tough. That creates barriers to people who don't easily have bank accounts, don't have jobs that they have record-keeping where they made money. So that becomes a real challenge, trying to figure out who is it that really needs this help. And then it's where do you, where's the cutoff? Because, like I said, I'm just throwing out numbers. If there were 1,500 people and we wanted to give those people $400 a month for food, which is kind of less than what SNAP gives you, that's $600,000 a month. And we think the need is much greater than 1,500 people. So those are challenges. Those are the challenges to doing a system like this. And I don't really have, I haven't got an answer to how to solve those problems yet, nor do I know if I can solve them at any point soon. It's just they're challenging, they're challenging problems.
I'm going to allow Councilor Cupro, you have a question?
All right, I got two questions. One question is this. You said the difference between Port Park and the rest, you save with what? Port Park is $70,000, the rest is 100 or something?
It looks like we can operate Port Park at three distributions a week at roughly $58,000 a week.
And the other one is about 160?
125,000.
Okay, so if you operate from Port Park, all that money that you save, you're like saying food distribution for people, right? You can give them more food.
Yes.
And minimal costs for the taxpayers.
Well, we could continue that without any additional costs through the end of the summer, through August 31st, not by August.
So this seems logical to save money, give food to the people, more food. The next question I have is, when you're not, and who qualifies? What if somebody has, let's say, somebody that's here in the legal world that comes, that has no identification, has nothing, and wants to, what would you do to that? How would you give it to them? They have no ID, they have no ID, and they're hungry. What would you do for them?
So people in that category who don't have children in our school system will be very difficult to qualify because there's no, other than just accepting a self-certification from them that they have a need, it would be hard to otherwise qualify them. Because in most cases, they're not going to provide us with any, they're not going to be able to give us, in a lot of cases, they won't be able to provide us with financial information that will be able to prove their financial certainties.
I understand that, but what would, okay, so they can provide money, they can provide money, then what would you do? Would they be able to still get food?
We could have a system of self-certification. Sign this form under the penalties of perjury, and tell me how much you make in a month. And if you're under some threshold, then we, you qualify. And you either get put into a lottery, or we just have enough money to qualify everyone that meets this threshold that we set up. And you're self-certifying. You're not, we're not asking you to prove it with bank statements or weekly pay stubs or anything like that.
I have two more questions, and then I'm all done. If the cost that you save, we save, right? And we use, can we use our own employees to save? Can we use other employees that are here that are not in the city, not working, right? So the employees that are not working, would you utilize them to go? At least this group, who makes it, who gather, and that will eliminate the cost of other people gathering that's part of it. The next one is even a simple one. But you give them a card, right? And what you said earlier, that people, would you say it was 1,500 people that need income from Chelsea?
No, I think that the number of non-Chelsea residents in our lines.
10%?
It's probably less than 10%. You know, the one, the one day that we have the most is at Washington Park only because that location is right on the Everett line. So naturally, we're likely to get more people from Everett in that location.
So what, what if you do that card? What would it actually do? Do you put someone's picture on it? That card would be just workable to anybody. I can do that, you can give it to me, and I can do it. How would you know that that card belongs to that person?
We haven't, we haven't worked on that yet, so we're just talking in theory. So do you think?
This theory is a good one, right? It's a very good idea, give them the card, let people do it.
I think what we're saying is, that might be the direction we're going in. But it's too early to figure out exactly what the card would look like with trying to figure out what that would look like and how we operate it.
This idea is a good, a good way. All right, Tom, can you utilize the workers that I went home?
So we have been, for the last couple of months, we've been utilizing a lot of our own employees as volunteers. No, I cannot force a union employee to do a job that they're not required to do. So for the most part, these are work, employees of ours, like Ben, who's volunteered to do this work at the food distribution side. He has no obligation to do it.
But I see a lot of DPWs on Port Park, doing those boxes.
Yes, so we have asked them to do that, and they have. But at some point, our DPW has to get back to the business of DPW work. I mean, our residents have been inside their house. They're not complaining about potholes or signs down. But there's, they will be very soon. And I have to have a DPW crew. And starting Monday, the DPW is pretty much back doing DPW work.
Do you utilize them anymore?
No, which is why we've hired Tufts to do a lot of this work for us and why we've hired lots of temporary employees at Port Park to do all of the packing and the distribution that Ben is doing. And we have a transportation contractor that's doing transportation work, delivering food to houses. So we've got a lot of, we're paying a lot of, you know, again, getting back to my, one of the, one of the advantages of a card-type program is these sort of non-food costs go away.
Let me, let me just add that I don't want to speak for the Salvation Army because I don't know their operation, but I know I've participated with St. Luke's and the collaborative. Long-term, this work, at the level that we're doing right now, is solely based on volunteers. And it's hard to continue to operate these pop-up pantries on a volunteer basis. It's an incredible amount of work right now. And yes, I'm sure all three will say we're very thrilled with the outpour that has happened right now. But, you know, like any campaign, like any kind of work, people tire out. And you can't continually depend on running what is, you know, life-threatening food pantry on volunteers. And that's one of the reasons why EBTs should be explored because at some point, the volunteers are going to be going back to work, back to a regular life. And it may be slow, trickling, but that's the, that's the trouble that you have, not only getting donations for the food, but, you know, the manpower, woman power of doing all of this.
This idea is a good one.
Absolutely. I want to see if there's anyone that wants to raise their hand. I see Councilor Judith Garcia, go ahead. I recognize Councilor Judith Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I appreciate, first of all, the work of everyone who's contributed here and who's given their testimony of what's going on in terms of food distribution. Tom, I appreciate the options that you're currently working on to present to council in terms of what's next. I'm curious to know, I know that Governor Baker announced yesterday that he was going to give away $56 million on food security in the state. Have you heard from his administration in terms of helping us?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we're gonna get reimbursed for a lot of our costs. There's no question about it. In fact, I feel pretty confident we're gonna get reimbursed for eventually 100% of everything we've spent. The question, though, is when? I just don't know when that reimbursement is coming.
Okay. Leo, can you put yourself on mute, please? Thank you. So, Tom, you were saying that?
Yes, so I do think we will be reimbursed for all of these costs at some point. There's money, there's a significant amount of federal CARES Act money available for COVID-19 expenses. The governor made sure that the amount for Chelsea was sufficient to cover all of our costs. As long as, you know, for COVID-19 expenses, the amount that's available does seem to be able to cover almost all of these food costs. In addition, I, we are gonna apply for that grant program that was included within that $56 million. That is something Alex and I are looking at and trying to figure out what the best, you know, that could be seed money for an EBT-type program. And we're trying to think that through as we speak. So I, you know, these costs will be covered. I'm pretty confident of that. The timing on when we're gonna get these costs covered is a little uncertain. And so it could be that if the council says, "Continue with the five locations through the summer till August 29th, run up a $600,000 deficit, and we'll figure it out then. And if you need an appropriation, come to me in the summer." We can do that because I do think that someday, all of this money should be reimbursable to us.
Okay, so, but, but I, this is a confirmation I'd be interested in getting. So if we were to decide to go that route of extending it until August 29th, is it guaranteed that we will be reimbursed? Or is it a battle that we're going to figure out and see if it happens or not?
I'd say, you know, there's a very strong likelihood. These costs are all COVID-19-related expenses. I'm 95% certain that these costs are gonna be covered. The question is more about time.
Great. So, um, so that, thank you for answering that. And then my other question for you is going back to this EBT program. So I'll give you my position first. I think that the work that we're doing now is vital and it's important. So I agree with Counselor Bido on that, on being informative before just completely removing the food pantries that our residents have depended on so much. But I also agree with you on creating a system that may be a little more sustainable, like the EBT card and giving folks dignity of purchasing their own food that is also, you know, that speaks to their culture, which is important. However, when can you have, if we were to go this route and we were to say, you know, let's explore the EBT, when would we have something in front of us in terms of the timeline of the program itself, qualifications, and application?
You know, I just don't know that some of these, some of these decisions are gonna be, some of the decisions are just gonna be impossible to solve and they're just gonna require a policy decision. Like, if you want to go to this EBT card program, I can figure out a way to create a card to get them, you know, to set up a system, I think, is, I can solve, hopefully within a month, month and a half. The question's gonna be, how are we qualifying people? What's the cutoff? And how much are we giving people a month? And that's just a matter of how much the city wants to commit to this program. I can tell you with 100% certainty that we're gonna get reimbursed for these costs because I know there's $3.5 million available to us and our costs haven't reached that amount yet. Although, they're getting close because when you take into account these costs of the food program, all of our hotel costs and all of the other costs we've incurred because of this COVID-19 crisis, we're coming close to $3.5 million. So at some point, our number, you know, after this, after this summer, if we continue this program into the fall, our costs aren't gonna be reimbursed because the government isn't, there's not enough money left that the government is setting aside for Chelsea. We've been set aside $3.5 million. We haven't reached that number yet, but at some point in a food program like this, we will. So I can solve the architecture problem. I'm not, I'm gonna have to come back and say, how do you want to qualify people? I mean, is it self-certification? And then when we get 5,000 applications for this food program and we're only giving 1,000 people a card, where, how are we doing that? Are we doing a lottery? Are we figuring out some other way? Are we prioritizing people with schoolchildren? Those are all policy decisions that at some point we have to make because we definitely don't have unlimited money to provide every person in need. Everyone showing up at the collaborative, at St. Luke's, at Salvation Army. We don't have enough money to give everyone of those people a card and give them enough money every month for the next year to meet their food needs.
I agree, I agree. Okay, well, that's the extent of my questioning. And I know that it's tough to answer these because we don't have a manual, right? Especially if you have to deal with that. So I'm all set with your questions and open attention to colleagues.
Is there anyone, Counselor Bido?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Counselor Avijana. I want to go back to a question that Roy asked earlier as far as having a central location where we can do the food distribution. If having a stationary area can cut the cost, it cuts the, it cuts the cost dramatically. What would, how could we do something like that maybe in, behind Chelsea Walk in Luther's Place? Like, is that an option?
St. Rose.
Or St. Rose, yeah.
St. Rose. St. Rose is closing down and has the huge parking lot in the back, and it's close to City Hall.
Because if we can cut the cost that much, I mean, I think it's worth exploring. If it's just those pods, those containers that we're trying to house Port Park because it holds that, can we move those elsewhere? And I'm just gonna throw out my other questions, and then I'll ask people to answer them. The other thing is, I want to hear from Alex and Ben about their opinions on this EBT system and whether or not continuing this food distribution program all through the end of August, if it's really sustainable. I also, you know, I went out the other day and we need to really do some serious weed-whacking. The weeds are out of control. And I know, I know it's the least of our worries right now, but I do understand that it is time, that we do need DPW to get back to work. And I agree that all of the employees at City Hall have been stars and fulfilling jobs that are outside of their job description. So I just wanted to make sure to give that lift. But so my question is about a more centralized location. And I want to hear from Alex and Ben as to whether or not this is sustainable and their opinions on EBT.
So I would defer to Alex and Ben on how difficult, assuming we could find a spot, like the priest at St. Rose says, "Yes, you can use my spot for the whole summer," or a school, whatever. I just, I need to hear from them. How feasible is that to pick that up and re-woke it? I don't know anything.
So, um, to start with relocation, so there's costs that we would have to bear that are currently offset because of our location. So right now, there are sort of those storage pods and then refrigeration units. Eastern Minerals has primarily funded those with the exception of one refrigerator. But a refrigerated unit runs between $10,000 to $12,000 a month. The smaller pods are less expensive. They're sustainable. So there may be a cost savings, but I don't think it would be a dramatic cost savings once you factor in running the electrical infrastructure, hiring the electrician, and then renting all of the equipment you need that we're currently not paying for. I don't think it would be a tremendous reduction in cost, even if you take the transportation expenses out. It would be some reduction, but not dramatic.
And so currently, Eastern Salt, Alex, is bearing that, the burden of the cost of electricity and everything?
They have, yep.
And how sustainable do you think this food distribution program is five days a week throughout the summer?
I wouldn't term it as sustainable. Like, the city manager mentioned, there are staff here that are resuming their regular duties, like Ben, who has his plate full this summer with design, planning and design and construction projects. I do think that the food card idea is far more sustainable from a management perspective. It would still require some intensive oversight and management. It obviously would require the labor and purchasing and distribution you're seeing outside right now. But it would still require, you know, a project manager devoting a substantial amount of time to working with an administrator, working on marketing the program, processing applications in partnership with the administrator, and awarding the funds. So it's really, I've been looking at this from a cost-benefit perspective. You know, can we figure out a system that doesn't require an enormous amount of labor or time of everybody that has a large impact? And food cards seem to be one of the more efficient ideas.
Thank you. Ben?
I would just echo a lot of what Alex had said. The other thing is that locating the site brings another host of issues beyond just electricity and sort of bearing the cost of the actual refrigerator units or pods. You know, the benefit of the Port Park site is that we can easily get trucks in and out. It has a large footprint. It makes logistics very easy. And, you know, I do think that for the remainder of the summer, the program is, you know, sustainable from a personnel standpoint. It will require some level of oversight from the people like myself and others that have been overseeing it. But, I mean, right now, it's functioning largely, you know, independently of whether DPW is there or not. We have some great managers on site. So I think that the sustainability over throughout the summer is feasible. Of course, it will get hotter and footprinted people to have three refrigerator units to grapple with, that type of thing. So I don't think moving it is the right move. And I think that after the summer is ending, that that site will no longer become feasible because of, you know, inclement weather, you know, it's happening, all resuming regular activities. So I would think on an EBT card, well, from a management standpoint, from an infrastructure standpoint.
Yeah, I would just add, we have to transition to something by the end of August.
Before?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, people, it's, you know, you're dealing with food and it's, you know, working in that industry, being outside on a continuous basis, it's one thing to work a, you know, say, a fruit market or a farm stand for a couple of hours, but having a regular, you know, food preparation outfit in the outdoors is not only difficult because of the elements, it's actually health adverse. So you're actually, so it's not a good idea, particularly when you're dropping off meats and everything in the middle of the street, try to, you know, pass that on and the temperature is getting higher and you're supposed to maintain the meats at a certain temperature. It's just, even proteins and stuff. So, I, again, I, hopefully, the EBT card program can get off and running quicker than, you know, I would say July, hopefully by July.
Well, what would it look like if everybody worked together where the city did something on Mondays and Wednesday, the collaborative Tuesdays and Thursdays, and Salvation Army was on Fridays, and everyone just put their resources together and worked collaboratively in addressing this? Is that a possibility? It just seems like it'll be much easier to handle it that way.
The only, the only thing I would say to that is, I wish that we had, if we, if that collaboration was to happen, we still need some sort of tracking so that we are making sure that we're not having repeat peoples who are standing in there. I mean, I get it that they're in line, but I think that if we were, City Hall is about to open, and so that they're not overrun, they're talking about only having certain streets, people, residents from certain streets come in on a Monday or Tuesday or whatever. I mean, I think that's what should be happening in the food program. I really do think that we need to track people so they can come, you know, once a week or at best, you know, if it's a large family, twice a week. But having the opportunity for someone to stand in line five days and in some cases, at multiple locations because on the morning, they go into the city drop, and in the afternoon, they go into a collaborative or, you know, St. Luke's. You know, we have to, we have a way to track. The EBT card is the best way to track someone because it's direct payment and that they have the card. Anyway.
I agree. My concern with the card is that it might prevent people who are not documented from participating in the program or the barriers that that might pose. But, but I agree.
May I say something?
Yeah, Roy, can I have a little conversation here?
Sure. Sorry, I can't see you video-wise, so, yep, go ahead.
Well, just a couple of points. I mean, the fact that if we're at Port Park, we have to remember the day that the Patriots did the delivery, we had 500 people show up at Port Park. The, if we're able to have some savings by doing it from Port Park, I'd like to see that money go to the rental assistance program. I do like the idea about the EBT cards. And one mechanism is, um, the Reach Kids actually, at graduation, always gets a credit card through the Chelsea Credit Union with a certain amount of money on it that they get for graduation. So this could be a conversation with the credit union about the possibility of looking at EBT cards and whether or not they would be able to handle the volume that we would create.
I was thinking of the Metro Credit Union and maybe approaching them to see if they can handle, you know, 25,000 to 3,000 cards being distributed and having that many accounts set up. And again, I'll let the city manager explore. But that's a suggestion I thought in my head when I thought about the EBT. Because, again, Metro Credit Union, unlike banks, don't follow the same federal guidelines that may restrict individuals without a social security number to open up an account. So there may be some leeway there with some financial institutions because we have to remember that if we're dealing with people that don't have a social security number, are they able to open up an account? And I think in some instances, the credit unions do allow that with a ten number. So even if we want to help certain individuals, if they don't have a ten number, it may be difficult to open up the account. The best-case scenario is you do what CapEx does and they buy the gift cards and they hand it out. And you're handing out gift cards at, you know, at the drops. Instead of them people standing in line for a food box, they're standing in line for a gift card and they just have to provide some sort of documentation. And we can decide what that documentation may be. It may be just a bill from your home or whatever it may be, but something that shows some sort of residency here in Chelsea. But I'm sure that, you know, where there's a will, there's a way. So, but. Anyway. Anyone else? Raise your hand?
Roy?
I'm sorry, Todd? I see Counselor Taylor.
So, so this is kind of a complicated problem. I think that, I think that we need to find a way that everybody gets fed, that we can save money on, on non-related costs and that we find some way going forward after the summer. So my thoughts are that the EBT idea as an actual EBT card is not gonna be workable. my thoughts are that the EBT idea as an actual EBT card is not gonna be workable. I think there's too many problems. I agree with the city manager on that. I do agree with Roy's last comment that it makes a lot more sense people to be able to get a card from Capic or from any other, um, you know, nonprofit that we have in the city. All of us have been working with somebody to do this. I think that makes infinitely more sense and and gets rid of a lot of our costs going forward. Now, the food might be a little bit more expensive at the market basket, but compared with the other costs. And and the other thing is, by my calculations, we're, we've almost used up all that reimbursable money. Tom, is that, you spent about three million of the three point five, is that, is that correct?
If we include the money for the rental assistance program, we're over three point five million.
Well, that was my question. I was asking Fidel this morning when I was at Washington Park about this. And he said, that's a Tom question, so. Is the rental, is the rental assistance? So so we've already spent, I think, three, three million dollars on food and hotel, correct? We've appropriated that much?
We've appropriated, we've appropriated about two point one million. And uh, I have to look at the numbers. We're, I think we're in about two point two million dollar range for non, without rental assistance, we're about at two point.
And rental assistance would eat the rest of that money up, right?
Correct.
So that's about another one point two million. So that's, that's my, that was my point.
So if we went through the rest of the summer with this five day a week, we'll, we'll have another half a million dollar deficit.
Right, so so here's my point. And that is, and that is not taking into consideration any kind of help for the businesses who are gonna go out, which is, which is just as vital as as this other piece.
Yeah, but that is, that is not reimbursable. That piece, the help to small businesses, is not reimbursable.
Okay, so.
All the other stuff is.
Okay. So, so I I kind of agree with Leo in the in fact that, that I think that the non-food related costs could be saved and that money could be in turn either either put into the rental program or just turned back into additional food instead of, you know, paying contractors to haul the food or to be the National Guard going forward. I don't think that makes a lot of sense. I know we don't want people having to walk all the way to Port Park to get the food, but, you know, look, we're in a, we're in a tough situation and and, you know, from the, from from my observations, working every week with with, in this program, you know, most of the people have some way to get the food back to where they're coming from. And so whether that's, it's little carts that they're pulling with them or, you know, they 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 get a ride with somebody in a car or whatever it is, a lot of people have have such such means to haul the food away. I just think that when we're, when we're talking about limited funds, we have to make sure to get as much bang for the buck, especially in the reimbursable funds, because as we all know, we're not dealing with, uh, you know, uh, a lot, our full measure of receipts coming into the city. So we're we're gonna be, you know, on on a restricted budget anyway. So we really need to watch the money and make it count when we spend it. The other thing is, is that I know that that, I I I'm sure it's true that we get more people from out of town at Washington.
Has left the meeting.
But we're, you know, we were, I think we were over thirty percent today with people coming from Everett, Revere, East Boston, Winthrop. I mean, there's, there's, there's a ton of people coming outside. It's not, you know, and what, that's, you know, that's the one that I go to because it's my district. But we do get a lot of people from outside of Chelsea doing that. So I do think that if we can verify that the people are living in Chelsea, I don't have any problem with, you know, our nonprofits giving out the gift cards to people instead of an EBT card, which is gonna create all kinds of, you know, legal issues and and all kinds. I think it's just better avoided going the other way. And I think we're gonna be able to feed more people this way to food, so that's my two cents.
So I need answers to two questions. One's a simple one that I think you could answer right now, which is, what do we do on Fridays? City Hall's opening next week. I can't have food distribution on this parking lot on a Friday when City Hall's open. Can we just do Mary C Burke on a Friday?
Yeah.
That okay with everyone?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's where it's needed the most anyway.
I'm sorry?
I I mean, I think that's where it's needed the most because the people in that part of the city, you know, don't have access to any other things where people, you know, who live by City Hall have access to other distributions. So I mean, it's more important to maintain that the Mary's, uh, the the.
That was an easy one. So Mary C Burke will be the Friday distribution starting on Friday, June eighth. This this Friday will be at here and at Mary C Burke. I'm gonna do both locations. The second is the hotter one, which is, does the, you know, I'm just telling you, this is not easy stuff and I'm not gonna have a solution till the summer. I don't know when, and it's not gonna be before probably August first. So what does the council want to do while we're in this, while we're trying to figure out a solution? Does the council want to continue to do the five distributions? Or at some point, do you want us to relocate to Port Park? If the council's interest is five locations, we'll do it. It will just mean that there will be some deficit created.
I I personally would just rather keep the five in place until we can get a gift card program going. And once we get the gift card, the sooner the better. We get rid of the, you know, the food line because it's just, it's not sustainable. So I would say your marching orders, my own, my marching orders would be, get a gift card or a or a EBT card program going sooner rather than later so that we can get out of the pop-up food pantry business.
Right.
And in the interim, keep the five neighborhood locations.
And in the interim, keep the five going.
Okay.
But it shouldn't take long.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we could be out of this business pretty quick if we can move on trying to, you know, make sure that we can, our non nonprofit partners in town, you know, willing to help in the distribution of these gift cards. So I mean, I I I think that, and the sooner the better because the sooner you can get rid of it, the sooner you can get rid of those additional costs. You turn that into additional gift cards for the people. I mean, you know, it it just makes a lot of sense to spend money on transportation instead of food for people.
I just, I just want to jump in and and I agree with a lot of what Councilor Taylor said. Except for the part that a lot of people have transportation to these food sites. I am across the street from Bellingham Hill Park. People start lining up at seven thirty in the morning and many of them don't have carts. A lot of them are walking. And I would support the EBT program. I I like the dignity of it, of people being able to buy their own cards and supporting local businesses. But if it becomes, I think it's hard to manage and if it becomes so hard that we're not prioritizing our undocumented population to be able to access food, then I am, I'm going to continue to support this five day, a week, the five day program. But I want to make sure that, that we continue to make sure.
I can assure you, we will be creating some program where documentation is not a factor nor a barrier. Figuring that out, though, is going to be tough and that's, that's really where we've struggled. So uh, that is our goal.
Thank you.
If I could just, I have to leave, but before I go, I think that, that, you know, the Salvation Armies at Saint Luke's, maybe not the collaborative because it's not what they traditionally do, are gonna remain and perhaps others will step up to complement this because we're gonna be, there's going to be a real strong need and those, those card, the money in those cards are gonna run out. And so there needs to be a two-pronged approach, the card, I think, as well as strengthening whatever we have on the ground now that traditionally have been providers of emergency food.
That's right.
Totally agree with that, Ron.
Okay. All right, everyone, if you have any questions or any follow-up concerns, feel free to email us all. And I want to thank everyone for joining us, Captain Niz Gonzalez, Ron, Ben and Alex. I know this is after hours for you guys, but I appreciate it. And as always, thank you, my colleagues, and Damali for bringing this up so we can meet on this.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, good night.